Call this meeting in order for the pleasure business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on nation under God, indivisible, in the thirteenth amendment of the Constitution.
Johnson, Absinthe, Prostow.
Here.
Prostow, here. Blatter. Blatter, Absinthe, Vieira.
Here.
Vieira, here. Rita.
Here.
Rita, here. Donahue.
Here.
Donahue, here. Holly.
Here.
Holly, here. Farrenwald.
Here.
Farrenwald, here. Osling.
Here.
Osling, here. Thompson.
Here.
Thompson, here. Carr.
Here.
Carr, here. Pittman.
Here.
Pittman, here. Slattery.
Here.
Slattery, here. Kulos. Kulos, Absinthe, eleven present, your honor.
Thank you much. Next, any motion to approve a committee of appointments to the date of June the fifth, 2018, and the city council meetings for the date of June the 12th, 2018? Motion. Motion by Alderman Prostow, second by Alderman Carr. Any questions? Roll call.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye, abstain.
Rita abstain. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Abstain.
Farrenwald abstain. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Nine ayes and two abstentions.
Can we open up the public conference again with three minutes? I manage the agenda. Anyone? Now moving on to the board of officials, presentation and resolutions.
She wants to go.
First piece of business you'll see, suggestions for new appointments on the library board, Sarah Nunez, Helen Camp, and Camessa DeDella. Those are my recommendations for appointments. Council, how do we vote on this? We're going to have a motion to approve all three new appointments. We have a motion to approve all three appointments filed with Holly, second by Alderman Vera. Any questions? Is this the library board? Yes. Roll call, please.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you much. The next one, I'm going to, it's the planning commission. The two new appointments will be Mr. Jason Berry, Mr. Ron Bloom. Again, I need a motion. Planning a motion, we vote on these, please. Let me do this up. Just let's go with Mr. Jason Berry first, is that right? Okay. Need a motion. By Alderman, Farrenwald, second by Alderman. Prostow, any questions? Roll call.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, no. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eight ayes, two noes and one abstention.
Thank you much. Next one, new appointment will be James Johansson. Again, he's still in for past board member William Klein, who resigned in 2017. Any motion? By Alderman. Donahue, second by Alderman. Rita. Any questions? Roll call.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye, abstain.
Rita abstain. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Abstain.
Farrenwald abstain. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you much. The next one, new appointment will be James Johansson. Again, he's still in for past board member William Klein, who resigned in 2017. Any motion? By Alderman. Donahue, second by Alderman. Rita. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you much. The next one, I'm going to, it's the planning commission. The two new appointments will be Mr. Jason Berry, Mr. Ron Bloom. Again, I need a motion. Planning a motion, we vote on these, please. We'll do this up. Just let's go with Mr. Jason Berry first, is that right? Okay. Need a motion? By Alderman. Farrenwald, second by Alderman. Prostow, any questions? Roll call.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
All right. Regarding Mr. Ron Bloom, I need a motion, and I need a second. Motion by Alderman Aslan, second by Alderman. Farrenwald, any questions? Roll call.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye, abstain.
Rita abstain. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you much. Next one, new appointment will be James Johansson. Again, he's still in for past board member William Klein, who resigned in 2017. Any motion? By Alderman. Donahue, second by Alderman. Rita. Any questions? Roll call.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eight ayes, two noes and one abstention, your honor.
Thank you much. Next one, new appointment will be James Johansson. Again, he's still in for past board member William Klein, who resigned in 2017. Any motion? By Alderman. Donahue, second by Alderman. Rita. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Do you have a question?
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you much. Next, I need a motion to approve a request from California Gardens Christian above Actus Church to sponsor a back-to-school festival on Saturday, August 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Need a motion by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Vera. Any questions? Roll call.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Next one's a motion to approve a request from St. Max's Church to hold the St. Patrick's Festival on Saturday, July the fourteenth, 2018. I asked that be placed against so there's no confusion, because again, it was supposed to be Metro South Day, and so we're all clear, July the fourteenth, St. Patrick's Festival. You have a motion by Alderman Pittman, or you have a question?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
There are signs all over town promoting this.
Yes.
How can they promote this when they have to that approval?
Well, can that happen? Let's put this way. But that's why it's brought before us to make sure this is be done. Thank you.
I like that one.
All right, you got a motion, you have a second? Second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you much.
And I also did get someone, a resident stop in today. She's a little late. Her block party is July fourth. It's the 3,300 block of Edison. It's right, there's two houses there. She did bring the $50 in, so. If there's a consensus, it's both we would need, unless there's anyone hasn't tracked it, like we did today for Bethel.
Consensus? Okay. Again, this, I think she applied to do this last year, but she was not late last year.
She wasn't, no, wait, this is an ongoing black party.
It's the end of the block.
But she wasn't late last year, right.
Okay. So there is a consensus to allow it?
Okay.
Yes.
Then we'll do the same thing as we did for Bethel Pentecostal.
That's fine. Any bids?
No bids, your honor.
Mr. City Treasurer. Okay. City, go ahead.
I have a question for the treasurer. Thank you, mayor. Mr. Treasurer, who's on the wire transfer authorization now? We're still waiting, so you know, we have a meeting with the bank. We're still waiting documentation. It'll be myself and the treasurer. So, there's no, the bank gave us a one-time approval last, last time. How was it going to be approved this time? Same way we did last time. I will approve it. Even though they gave us just a one-time exception? Just until we get the documentation.
We received an email that said the bank was only going to do it one time.
We're going to do it again, because we're waiting for them to send us the documentation.
And this is for payroll for Friday?
Yes, that's correct. We're waiting on the bank. Is that what happened, treasurer? They were supposed to send some paperwork. We met on Monday, discussed everything, and Farrenwald, we answered, there's a pursuit in the future for this situation. And the bank just sent out some paperwork to the mayor, assigned to him. Was that the assumption that it was going to be mailed out or emailed or whatever on Wednesday or Thursday? He still had that receipt. Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Isn't there supposed to be some sort of separation of money transfer, some kind of separation of authority?
Well, that's why we have both, we'll have to, him gets notified, then I get it, or vice versa. That's why we are here today.
But in the past, we've always had a non-elected official here to payroll transfer.
Well, I think it would be more improving to us that we have an elected official responsible for funding the money to the city of Blue Island.
In the past, we had a resolution, and we did it with Matt Anastasia. We also did it with Lori Brown, and I believe Andrea Trucco was on there as well.
In fact, that's.
And it went through the council meeting.
We have copies from the bank, and so this day, we still have it provided, we are coming back with a resolution. So that's why we're here. Go ahead. I have a copy of a resolution that, that you signed for a meeting that happened March 14th, 2017, that this body supposedly approved, but looking in the minutes of that meeting, the body never approved the resolution. And I believe the city treasurer sent it out with the memo last week. So you're, you signed it saying the governing body approved a resolution, but we never approved a resolution on that day. Now, let's check out what you have. Okay. I'd be happy to provide. Anything else? Well, I have one more question. Sorry. Thank you, mayor. When we do get the bit, the stuff back from the bank, are you going to bring it to city council for approval? Or? Yeah, it's coming for you. Yeah, it's coming for you. So what if, or if the council's not comfortable with being an elected official? Well, then you're going to have to decide who's going to be responsible, then you guys will be responsible for whoever handles the money in the city of what? Got you. I just wanted to confirm that you are going to bring it to the city council.
It's to authorize the wire of the money for the payroll.
Correct. Correct. Thank you. City Attorney.
First item is an ordinance number 2018, or two ordinances, numbers 2018-033 and 2018-034. Ordinances restricting portions of certain streets for handicap parking only, 2631 West 121st Street, and 12722 Greenwood Avenue, in the city of Blue Island, County of Cook and State of Illinois, providing that piece with the violation.
Any motion by Alderman Asling, second by Alderman Vera? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Prostow.
Aye.
Prostow, aye. Vieira.
Aye.
Vieira, aye. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Eleven ayes, your honor.
Thank you much.
I'm going to go out of order. The next item on the agenda, or the next item I'm going to address is number three on the agenda, and that is item ordinance number 2018-035, which is an ordinance approving an amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the city of Blue Island and Blue Island Hospital Company, LLC, DVA Metro South Medical Center, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the amendment. Briefly, the amendment changes the amount of the reimbursement of tax income to the city from $500,000 to $750,000 for use in projects in the Tiff District Number Five. That agreement was negotiated with the new management of Metro South in March, and it's been brought to your attention this evening for approval.
Send the motion.
Yes.
Motion by Alderman Farrenwald, second by Alderman Asling. Any questions? Roll call. Go ahead.[1072.33]
Uh, on this, I, I don't approve six Bs, six Ls, uh, this type of Class A real estate. I'm gonna approve it now because it is a hospital, otherwise, I would say no.
That's right.
Alderman, this is the, this is to, this, the ordinance, and then 2018-35 is the ordinance that increases the amount of money that the city will get by 250. The next light item will be the resolution for the Class A.
I understand.
Okay. Uh, the question is, now roll call.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Viera. Viera, abstain. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrell.
Aye.
Farrell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Ten ayes and one extension, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Now, number two on the agenda is resolution number 28 dash 024, a resolution of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, supporting the renewal of a Class A real estate tax assessment classification for 12930 South Gregory Street, Blue Island, Illinois, which is the Metro South Medical Center.
Need a motion? Alderman Osling, the second. Alderman Polly. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Viera.
Abstain.
Viera, abstain. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrell.
Aye.
Farrell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Ten ayes, one extension, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Any else, counsel?
That's all I have here. I'd like to go, uh, go into closed session at the end of the meeting if we can, discuss pending litigation and the pending workers' compensation matter.
Okay, that's fine. Any reports, can you roll them here?
No report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is Thursday, July 5th, at 7:30 in the city council chambers.
Thank you very much. Finance committee?
The finance committee was called to order last night, um, members present, Tyrell Frosto, Alderman Tom Holly, Alderman Bill Farrell, Alderman Jim Osling. Absent was Alderman Thompson. Also present was Mark Miller, Don Lovelace from Metro South, Tim from John, from John Kaspierik's office, Mike Marzelle, Director of Finance and Administration. No public comment. The committee approved the payroll for June 15th, 2018, in the amount of $350,857.77. I make that in form of motion to city council to approve.
Motion, is there a second? Alderman Polly? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrell.
Aye.
Farrell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
No.
Slattery, no. Ten ayes and three noes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Uh, committee has the council payment for June 27th, 2018, in the amount of $411,659.22. I make that in form of motion to city council to approve.
Motion, is there a second? By Alderman Pittman. Any questions? Roll call, please.
That last one was eight-three for the record.
Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Farrell.
Aye.
Farrell, aye. Osling.
Aye.
Osling, aye. Thompson.
No.
Thompson, no. Carr.
No. No.